Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the April twenty fourth Walton City Council. We're going to council meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance pled tonight by Councilor Gonzalez.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stand one nation under all.
That brings us to announcements and announcement. Number one is a new employee introduction, a new building inspector, Samantha Vendegris. Welcome. Go ahead and sit. Be comfortable.
And mic.
Samantha has many years of experience. She comes to us from Milwaukee and Oregon City. I went to school with her twenty five years ago. Tri County area, hands examiner, inspector, building official. She brings a wealth of knowledge and expertise to the building division here, and I'm very excited to have her as a part of the team.
Welcome. So you do both commercial inspections, residential, which do you have a specialty or?
I do both. I do commercial, residential, and residential plumbing. So all over the board.
Anything you'd like to say?
I'm happy to be here.
And when did you start?
January thirty first.
We're just going to meet you now. I guess you like it. You stuck around for a few months.
So, yeah.
Well, welcome. Any other questions for?
Yes, just welcome aboard.
Thanks. Now I am number two. We have a special recognition recognition of the Walton High School basketball champions. Gentlemen, come on up. Okay, you got the cameras up there. So you guys smile for the camera. Yep. So go ahead, Coach. Go ahead and if your guys want to say stuff, the camera's up on the ceiling. Right? Yeah, there you see it. Well, we want to congratulate you on a back to back win.
Yeah, I'm very excited. We're unfortunately. Being able to come back off of last year's championship that they were targeted on our back again. Everybody rooting for West Lynn. It was really awful that for that, and if some of you don't know, we did play West Lynn probably four times this year. We lost three, but the one time that really kept them out of town. And we, we really got an opportunity to do real well and pull it out. Coach Duggan, as we go through the Walton basketball since Walton basketball has been born, I guess. So, Duggan, you want to say anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you so much. We had tremendous support from the community and from our high school administration as well as our fan and our cheerleaders. Doesn't just happen without with just the players. We have, we have the full support of everybody. It's also fun to coach men and what's your head coach? That doesn't happen very often that it's your head coach. That's also fun when your performance shooting. I don't want to introduce all my players. I don't think you want to say anything as well. So we had three juniors. We had three juniors with CJ Goodwin, Jaden Portier, and Paul Jagger. Jaden Portier was the only one out of our school. So he has two rings now and then these two have they got their first one. And this is our only freshman. And we're planning to see like the mind that has been built in.
Yeah, they wouldn't. Watch out, they punch. Okay, the lane. You got two moves. Yeah, that's cool.
That brings us to announcement. Number three, mental health awareness month proclamation, which will be read by Councilor Brock.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation declaring May twenty twenty three as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Twalton. Whereas mental health is part of everyone's overall health and well being. And mental illness is prevalent in our county, state, and nation. With one in five adults experiencing a mental health issue every year. And whereas stigma and the resulting discrimination is a primary obstacle to early identification and effective treatment of individuals with mental illness and their ability to recover to lead full productive lives. And whereas approximately half of chronic mental illness begins by the age of fourteen. And suicide is the second leading cause of death of individuals ages ten to fourteen and twenty five to thirty four. And whereas long delays averaging eleven years occur between the time of symptoms first appear and when individuals get help. And it is therefore essential to cure the stigma and discrimination that is the primary cause for those delays. And whereas every community can make a difference in helping cure the stigma and discrimination that for too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. Whereas public education and civic engagement improves the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Twalton hereby proclaim May twenty twenty three to be Mental Health Awareness Month to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health, to promote identification and timely treatment of mental illnesses and to cure the resulting stigma and discrimination introduced and adopted this twenty fourth day of April twenty twenty three by the city of Twalton. Yes. And I just want to say too, I think that I serve, I've served a lot of people for a long time. However, this period of time, I think that we've been through with the pandemic. There's a different level of conversation around need and there's a different kind of openness I'm hearing in communities, whether we're talking with our police and their ride alongs and how we're taking care of our own officers. And, you know, having more of a we statement in, in the conversation of how to cope with really challenging times. So I just want to say that and to encourage people to take to heart that it really can save lives to treat people kindly and respectfully, even when they seem to be not acting like themselves sometimes. Thanks.
That brings us to public comment. This is empty for anyone to address the city council, and I'm not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. There's anyone here in the building or on Zoom who would like to take opportunity for public comment? Please do so now. Do you have any signed up? Second, just in case. All right. No public comments tonight. All right. That brings us to our consent agenda. These items are considered routine. They will be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like to item removed and heard separately later tonight. That consent agenda consists of. Item number one, consideration of approval of the work session in regular meeting minute of April tenth, twenty twenty three, and special work session of April twelfth, twenty twenty three. Item number two, consideration of resolution number five sixty seven dash twenty three, authorizing the purchase and replacement of the Jergens Park playground equipment and surface through interstate cooperative procurement program. And item number three, consideration of resolution number five six eight eight dash twenty three authorized as a city manager to sign an agreement to terminate an easement across property owned by Lenar Northwest LLC, south of Norwood Road. Would any councilor like an item removing consent and heard later tonight?
I would like item number three, resolution number five six eight eight dash twenty three removed from the consent agenda. I'll also make a motion that we adopt the other two items that consent agenda is read.
A motion in a second to adopt items number one and number two on the consent agenda. Any discussions on that motions? Those in favor say aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. All right. That brings us to special reports. Our special report first special report tonight is from the Family Justice Center update. It's coming via the web, right? Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us tonight.
Welcome. Judy, now you're on mute. Go ahead.
There I am. I'm sorry. I was hitting the buttons trying to get back to where I was supposed to be. Yes, thank you, Rachel, for, for jumping in. I am Judy Willie with the Family Justice Center of Washington County. And I am president of the Board of Directors, and we are very, very appreciative and thrilled to be here tonight with all of you. We do this on an annual basis. It is our commitment to meeting with our, our city and our city councilors to talk about the year before and all of our successes and our, even our challenges throughout the year. And we, we really take it to heart to make sure that our cities know the difference we make in the greater county and communities all across the county. So I, I serve with a board of directors of fifteen members. And we have a variety of leaders on our board. I'm really proud to serve with. We opened our doors in two thousand eighteen for any of you that weren't here at that time. And we've been full force in open since that time. And even during COVID, we only closed our, our door one day. So we're very proud of that. We serve a, a community that really needs our assistance in domestic violence, family violence, and, and sexual assault, and soon to be child abuse. And so right now, I, I am proud, very proud to rep, to introduce our executive director, Rachel Shutz, who will tell you all about what's happening inside the Family Justice Center. Rachel.
Thank you, Judy. And again, thank you all for having us and think it is, it is a real honor to get to speak with all of our city councils on an annual basis. It's not only just a really nice touch point, but it's really nice to meet all of you, but also know that all of the cities in Washington County so trying to think of the right word, but I guess I'll say solidly enthusiastically support the work of the Family Justice Center. And that's not just for our organization. That's so important for survivors in all of our cities to know that, to know that their city is behind them and supports them when they need it most. So in twenty twenty two, at the Family Justice Center, you all have the packets in front of you, but I will just highlight that our service numbers went way, way up, much more than we thought that they would. And that is, you know, I think if we were in another kind of industry, that would be great news. But as an organization that provides services for domestic and sexual violence, that's not good news. However, what I will say is that, you know, coming out of the pandemic in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, rates of violence unfortunately rose quite a bit. And so what I am pleased about is that in twenty twenty two, when the world really started opening up in earnest with schools opening and businesses opening and a majority of the stay at home orders lifting, people knew where they could go to get the support that they needed. It was really hard to find that support in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, even though we were open. It's very hard to leave a situation where you are stuck for many, many reasons or have excuses to leave or even go out into public. And so I am pleased that we were able to do that. We also did a lot of targeted outreach, knowing how isolated all of our communities were. But in particular, some of our more underserved communities, such as our rural communities and our Hispanic and Latino communities, and we saw those numbers rise by twenty six percent for our rural communities and by sixty seven percent for our Hispanic and Latino communities. And that is largely due to increased outreach to ensure that those folks knew where they could go now that we were opening up from the pandemic. Also, we saw a big increase in the number of services that we provided, and that is something that I can be excited about. That means that we had committed partners. That means that despite everything coming out of the pandemic with hiring challenges and resource challenges, we were able to really strongly provide the services when we were called upon to do so. Over twenty twenty two, we served over forty five hundred survivors from all across Washington County and provided over eighty three hundred services. And what's always great about the Family Justice Center and is the basis of our model is when survivors come to the Family Justice Center, they can see multiple partners, and you can see that by how much larger our service numbers are than our individual numbers, and that's excellent. By the end of twenty twenty two, we had fifteen partners that were part of the Family Justice Center, and they were there regularly providing in person services. And now in twenty twenty three, we've grown that even more, which is very exciting. In terms of the numbers of clients served from Twalton, which is always something that we want to highlight for our cities, we served fifty eight residents of Twalton with a hundred and six services, which is a pretty dramatic increase over twenty twenty one. And I remember meeting with the mayor and chief in twenty twenty one and talking about all the ways in which we could get the word out in Twalton and particularly how the police department could aid in that. And we did, we worked together on that and we provided law enforcement cards and you guys worked to put some information in your city newsletters. And that's really borne out. So even though Twalton is relatively far away from the Family Justice Center in South Washington County, the folks are still getting there when they need it. In fact, we've had Twalton police officers bring folks to the Family Justice Center when they needed it most. And so I just want to thank you guys again. That's what this really is, is this conversation of how amazing the city has been and the employees of the city have been all year in supporting the survivors in your city. And so thank you so much for that. That really is an incredible opportunity for, again, not just showing that you support the Family Justice Center, but most importantly, that you're showing that you support your own citizens because they may feel like they are alone and they don't have anywhere to turn, but you are signaling to them that they do in fact, and you as a city support them. Some more good highlights from our years. We had some great events over the past year. We had a survivor art gallery that we were able to do. We were able to partner with DHS and Huggies to distribute over fifty thousand diapers over the past year. I had no idea when I said yes, not only how many diapers that was going to be, but how big of a need those diapers were. In fact, all of those diapers are gone now. We're back to buying diapers. I could not believe how fast it went. We were able to participate in shop with the cops, so we took over twenty kids whose families had received services at the center back to school shopping with some local law enforcement agencies, which was wonderful. We did over two hundred Thanksgiving food boxes for families. And then we had our annual gathering of hope for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And so overall, it was a incredible year. What I'm most proud of is that all of our partners were able to step up as fast as they needed to when the survivors needed it most, and all of our cities were incredible partners in that. So again, thank you so much for having us. Thank you so much for always supporting us. And I would love to take any questions that you guys might have about the report or Family Justice Center.
Questions for Rachel or Judy?
So I was noticing for the city of Twalton that you provided fifty eight survivors with a hundred and six services, and I'm just curious what some of the services that survivors can get from your organization.
Yeah, those are great questions. So a lot of the services, one of our one of sort of the entry services, I guess you'll say, a lot of folks come to the Family Justice Center initially seeking restraining orders. The unique thing about the Family Justice Center is you can come there and you can file for, appear in front of the judge and be granted a restraining order in the same day, which provides immediate safety for folks that come there. And so a lot of people start there. In fact, that was one of our highest services. The other one is just to talk to somebody. Just being able to talk to somebody and ask their questions, find out what it is maybe that they're dealing with or get advice or just have somebody hear them and believe them. Some of the other services that folks come for can be basic need support such as food, family supplies, hygiene items, those sorts of things, counseling, childcare. We also provide childcare at the center, particularly if you have children with you. And then emergency hotel stays or shelter stays. Those are our real, those are the big ones that we provide. Most often folks come to us seeking safety and whatever that looks like for them, whether it's items, whether it's restraining orders, whether it's just a safe place to be. And then we sort of create that space for them that they can come back to again, if they need additional services or they want to engage in counseling or just ongoing support.
Thank you. And then I, my, my second question was I also noticed all of your partners, and I'm just curious if you also do resource and referrals with these partners or are they collaborative with the organizational level?
Yeah, that's a great question. So all those partners are located inside of our facility. So they all provide services onsite and we are able to all work together with survivors when they arrive.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We might add, just to answer that question, I would like to add that we have partners outside the agency also. So it's, it's really convenient and, and important that, that's why we opened the center the way we did is that if they could come and get most of the things they needed all in one place. However, when we run across a, a client that needs more than that, we have connections, we have partnerships outside, so we make sure that when they leave, they know exactly what they need to do and where, where they go. So it's great.
For partners outside the city, is, are there partners that are located closer here near Twalton that you can?
I'll let Rachel give you that answer because I'm.
Yeah, that's a good question. There are some partners that might have branches closer to the city of Twalton. I think that certainly the Twalton Police Department is one of our partners. The Department of Human Services has a branch that's relatively close to Twalton. And there are one or two culturally specific organizations that I can think of that are also closer to Twalton.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Reyes and Councilor Hillier.
Mine's really quick. I just want to know if you can put it on record or someone out there that's listening. How do they get ahold of you and how do, if they need your services? I think it'd be put it out there and say, this is how you can reach out to us if you need.
Thank you. The way that you can reach out to us is by calling our phone number, which is five oh three four three zero eight three zero zero. And our phone number works twenty four seven to connect with all of the crisis lines in Washington County. So you can connect for domestic violence, sexual assault, sex trafficking, mental health crises, or police non emergency, just with the push of a button.
And where are you located?
We are located. Oh, sorry. It got doubled.
Where are you located for folks who don't know?
We're located in Beaverton at seven three five Southwest one hundred and fifty eighth Avenue in Suite one hundred on, so we're right on the corner of Walker and one hundred and fifty eighth.
I understand you're changing your name.
Yes, that's a great question. So we are currently in the middle of a project to build, well, purchase and renovate a new center, which will be called the Family Peace Center because we are going to be incorporating and expanding a child abuse intervention and prevention arm. And so CARES Northwest, who many folks know that is in northeast Portland, that provides services for child abuse and neglect. They will be opening a fully functional location in Washington County in partnership with us. And so we're going to be, at the time that this project is finished and we have our new facility and they are all moved in and we have our other partners incorporated. We will be called the Family Peace Center of Washington County instead of the Family Justice Center of Washington County.
Questions?
Well, I was wondering what the most typical ways the people you serve find out that you exist? And if you have any suggestions of what we can do to help them find out about you?
Those are great questions. The most typical way, unfortunately, is when police officers respond on scene. Every police officer in Washington County for every agency and also the Sheriff's Department, they carry a survivor information card that is for the Family Justice Center. And they also can use their phones in the field, which has access to the Family Justice Center with all of the resources, which is excellent. A lot of times survivors will come in the front doors and just show us our own card and say, the police told me to come here. So the second most common way is, you know, website, social media, Googling something to find help, linked articles, those sorts of things. One of the ways that cities have found very successful in helping their citizens find out is to put information in things that go into people's homes. So we have, and a lot of our rural cities do this, they will put the Family Justice Center's information on their water bills or on their utility bills because that goes into every home in the city as opposed to survivors having to seek out that information, which can be dangerous. That's why there's all those automatic leave buttons when you go to a domestic violence website. If it can just sort of sit in the background of a home and we've found that our phone number is relatively easy to memorize because it has very few repeating numbers. That's been really helpful. And in those cities, that's where we've seen a really big increase. And in fact, you know, last year, the police department did a really big push to get out that information in Twalton, which is why we saw such an increase. And so any of those ways I think would be wonderful, but then also it's city specific. So if there are places and ways that you guys get information out to citizens of Twalton, that would be excellent through the schools, through specific places that people go. I have one city who has a poster that's right above the library checkout counter because everybody has to stand in front of that blank wall. And so they said, put an FJC poster up there. Everybody can stare at that instead. So whatever works for the city, we're happy to collaborate with you on.
So is it open to all residents or citizens?
It's open. Oh, I'm so sorry. I was saying citizens, and that's not a good idea. It's residents. So anybody from anywhere can say, can come to the Family Justice Center. We never ask any sort of immigration or citizenship status. None of our law enforcement officers would We never ask any sort of immigration or citizenship status. Um, none of our law enforcement officers would ask that either. You can go through the court system without that being an issue. Um, and so I do apologize. It is open to all residents of Washington County. Um, we even get people from other states and other cities frequently.
Other question? Well, thank you very much. Oh. Ian, go ahead.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that question.
Do you have any other languages that you're um like Spanish or Russian or any other languages?
Great question. So actually, we um, I probably at this point, the majority of the staff at the Family Justice Center speak Spanish. We also have folks that speak Farsi, Russian. Uh, I think Urdu is one of the languages. Um, we have several languages that are spoken. We also have a contract with the organization called Language Line, so we can pull up phone and also video interpretation for ASL if necessary. And then our website can translate into all the languages spoken in Oregon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rachel and Judy for visiting us again. It's yeah, always glad to hear from you and uh, continue the great work. Is this gonna be a bigger facility too than you have now?
It is gonna be a bigger facility, yes.
Just this much.
Yeah.
So Matt was asking where the new facility is?
Uh, we have not finalized a location yet.
Right. All right. Well, thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you guys so much. We really appreciate it again and have a great rest of your meeting.
You too. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Right.
All right, that brings us to special report number two. Uh, the Metro update from Councilor Gary Rosenthal. Welcome, Councilor Rosenthal.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Bobinik and Council. It's a pleasure to be here. It's nice to hear that report. That was something I normally wouldn't hear, but it's good to see that they have such a updated facility and they're working very hard. I think that's great for this, for the county. I wish they were a little closer to Twalton, but um, you know, at least sounds like they know where it's, where to take me. So that's great. So we do have a, uh, is that, oh, there we go. Yeah. Anyhow, happy to be here. I wanted to introduce Eduardo Ramos. He's my policy advisor. He's a long history in the area. He worked for Tiger and he knows a lot about what's going on, sometimes more than I do. Anyway, uh, we're the, we're sort of the team that serves the District Three here. So seven cities and you know all which cities goes all the way up to half of Beaverton and goes all the way down to Wilsonville and all the way out to Sherwood. So we try and keep a balance between what's going on. So we're all about collaboration and trying to, you know, spread information around so that everybody has the right information. Um, that is a sign of actually one of the facilities that that opened up uh last year. That's a viewfinder in Tiger. Um, I actually got COVID during that meeting, but that's.
Police are wearing your mask.
But uh, anyway, so I mentioned that because you're you're working on a facility here in in Twalton and the groundbreaking is in on June sixteenth. And I just talked to your uh, your uh, planning manager, your permits manager, and that's moving through the process. And so it looks like that's going to be work. Anyway, first, I want to talk a little bit about land use conversations of land use conversations. As you know, we Metro did a a new thing for Metro and we'd approved a trade from some lands in Clackens County to some to open up some urban growth lands uh on Tiger, which is near Kingston City. That was the first time we did that. It was a little controversial, but we feel that it was justified. So that's one of the main things that's happened. There was a UGB addition to Kingston Terrace. There's a lot of development. Kingston uh, King City is planning on a fairly large development. You have a development going on here, which is four hundred eighty or five hundred eighty. I always forget units. They plan on putting in three thousand units and then uh Kingston Terrace and then uh River Terrace, who will put in another three thousand units. There's a lot of activity, housing development going, going on potentially over the next one to five years. I mean, I don't know what the the one that's called Norwood Road. I don't, I forget what it's called. What?
Autumn Sunrise.
Autumn Sunrise. You should know, it's on my road. I live there. Uh, anyway, so that's what's going on. We are part of it for the update of the Urban Growth Boundary Plan. You have to do that. I'll get to that in a minute. Safe Streets, we got a, we got a grant for a two point four one million dollar, a two point four million dollar grant. It mostly is going to go to places like Hall Boulevard. That's not a lot to spend, but to improve particularly or to help change what's going on with state highways that are really become urban streets. And so that's a big deal. Hall Boulevard is a big deal for Tiger and it and theoretically, uh, Hall Boulevard comes all the way down into to Wallace and well, at least one forty-one does. They have seven seventy seconds. So that is, there's a bill to transition that. I don't know that it's going to make it through the through the legislature. Highway ninety-nine planning improvements are a priority, but still we have had trouble getting them onto the high priority list. Everybody admits that it's 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 an issue, but there just doesn't seem to be the money to put forward to doing a lot of planning on it. Um, one of the things I mentioned about Kingston Terrace, it is the way the plan is, it's going to include a collector road called Fisher Road, which is going to be to some extent a connector with one twenty-fourth into Walison. So it's, it's not going to be as good a connector as maybe we'd like to see, but getting people from further north, all the way down through one twenty-fourth and the Salt Creek Parkway and then down to I five. So that's, this is an important area of having transportation on the west side. That serves all the growth that's going to happen. Uh, your neighboring I mean, as you know, uh, Wilsonville is doing some development in Frog Pond and Sherwood is looking for development in areas out on its west side. So the west side is where a lot of the housing action is happening, other than apartments in downtown Portland, of course. So uh, Safe Streets, let's see. Housing bond investments. Probably the best news we've had so far is that we originally, the bond passed in two thousand eighteen, six hundred and twenty-five million. We originally projected thirty-nine hundred units. We're probably going to be able to build something like forty-seven hundred units. And there's going to be a mixture of some family units, a lot of multi, you know, two-person units and a lot of single-family units. And they're going to be all over. I, you would know what your particular planning is for the uh, plan back apartments uh, in this area. And I don't know the, I don't have the details on that right at this point in time. But we're going, it's, it's going on pretty well. We're spending the money, we're getting people to do it, and they're happening all over the district. I'm very happy to have one here. Uh, there's been a bunch in Tiger and they're going on in Aloha and Hillsboro. So there's a lot of openings to go to. I hope to collect a lot of shovels that way. Uh, let's see. I think I covered that. Oh, yeah. And I went to, there was a grand opening for another facility out in Aloha, yeah, uh, this last Friday, and that was the Aloha Apartments, which converted, it's about eighty units converted. First, it was converted to shelters and then they worked on another wing and got it converted to housing. And now they're working on the second wing and getting it all. So there's a a recently opened one. It was grand opening was last week. And so that, it was a nice facility close to transportation oriented development. Obviously, that's one of the things we, we all know we have to work on is getting better transportation access along Boon's Ferry unto these new areas that are that are happening in in Twalison. Mayor Boobinik knows a lot about the transportation issue. Um, okay, uh, this, the S H S tax. Uh, you heard a lot about that. You probably saw a lot and some people complained and that was a misstep on the part of between Portland and the and Metro. Metro, with the tax, Metro passed the tax, as you know, in two thousand nineteen. But the collection was sent to the city of Portland for logistic reasons. They already had the tax administration set up, but there were some missteps and some miscommunication. And so people weren't notified sort of the tax or the fact that there would be penalties and interest. A lot of people were pretty upset about that. And we, we realized there was just a lack of communication. Portland sent out a what I'd call sort of a nasty gram that people got fairly offended with. The Metro Council then decided, say, we're gonna, we waive all the penalties and interest for two thousand twenty-one. We can't waive the tax. It's, it's a past tax, but we waived all the penalties and interest. The other good news about that, I mean, that's not good news, but we realized that something just didn't happen the way it should. Sometimes in a rush, you don't do things right. We are also generating a fair amount of money from this tax where it's actually been a little bit more productive than we thought. So there's plenty of money in the, in the process. Uh, Washington County is doing a pretty good job of spending the money that's allocated. There has been some slowdowns in hiring, particularly for Clackens County and also for Alt-Noma County. So there's, ramping up has been difficult. As you know, there's been labor shortages. So getting this all going has been somewhat um somewhat slower than we would like. But so far about three thousand people have gotten at least temporary reprieve from being homeless. In other words, they get one or two months addition help. They have a medical bill they can't pay, and so they gets help to pay their rent so they don't go homeless. And we put over a thousand people, I think it's like twelve hundred people that have been helped off the streets already. And that's just ramping up. Remember, it's only been going for a year. So we hope that that's going to go. And and so if anybody has any questions, just interrupt and and we can, you know, we can get into that. I want to briefly cover the expo and the zoo. As you know, um, the Oregon Convention Center was very important in in the pandemic because it was a very major vaccine vaccination center. It is now coming back quite strongly. There was a coffee makers or coffee brewers convention there this weekend, and apparently the entire facility was full. This brings people into the region and brings people into the hotels. It's good for the economy of the region. We have a couple of big things booked, so that's doing all right. We're doing a study to figure out what to do with the Expo Center. That's going to lie along the new uh, the new uh transit corridor that's going over to Vancouver. If if and when the bridge gets built, I'll say when the bridge gets built. It's not if really. Um, so that is a study. Leading right now is to continue with the kind of expositions that happen, which is your RV shows, your swap meets or your garden shows or Cirque du Soleil, but also add on some facilities for regional, particularly lower than college level athletics, volleyball tournaments and things like that. Plus, special efforts to address the issues of the fact that one of the buildings was used in an tournament center for Japanese Americans during the war and another building was, was important to the Vanport flood people. So there's a lot of, there's some cultural things that have to be done to preserve, to update those buildings, make them safe and also provide cultural heritage. That's being decided. It's going to take probably another year or so before we have specific plans. The zoo is doing great. There's a lot of wonderful things going on at the zoo. Um, African antelope, which is an endangered species, Oregon turtles, Oregon pond turtles, chimps are doing well, the rhinos. Maybe even more rhinos coming. Uh, uh, but unfortunately we lost a lovable black bear. And then, of course, the condor program was very effective. A lot of condors going out there. And so that's, that's been very helpful. Cleanup and solid waste. I want to cover two particular things. One is, of course, the Rid Patrol. As I think I reported to you previously, we had a problem during the pandemic. The Rid Patrol picks, you call Rid Patrol and say, we have a legal dump that's happened someplace in in the city of Twalton, they will come and pick it up. I think the turnaround time is less than three days now. During the pandemic, it was like sixty days because we couldn't get people out there. We didn't have people trained and we couldn't use incarcerated labor, which we were using up to then. So, but that's recovered. So if you have any problems like that, more importantly for Twalton and the other cities is its regional refresh program, which is now small grants up to five thousand dollars, easy to apply for. It's a continuation of a program that existed before. In other words, if you have a problem with graffiti or and this can be applied by the city, the agencies, um, Chamber of Commerce, nonprofits, anybody can apply for it. And you get five, up to five thousand dollars to clean up a graffiti problem or a particularly local little dumping problem or something that's a new program.
The clicker just popped better. I'm still alive.
All right, everybody, that is the wake-up call, I guess. So anyway, the regional refresh is an important program. There's a sixty-five, something like sixty-five million dollar. Uh, yeah, uh, let's see, hold on. How much? I don't want to misspeak. We've given out. I should have the numbers here, but I don't remember. We've given out a bunch already, but this is a fairly new program, so make it known to people to apply for this if they have specific cleanup needs. Neighborhood associations can apply and so forth. So, you know, if you just have a lot that needs cleaning up and the neighborhood associated wants to do it and they need some help doing it. Um, solid waste, we're in the, currently in the fee setting process. Um, last year it was decided to try and keep things more or less constant. In other words, there was some, some benefit in keeping it constant and raise the rates at a standard rate of about eight percent per year, which is, this is for the regional solid waste fee. Uh, well, you know, as they say, the best laid plans don't always work out right. Inflation happened and now we have inflation at fifteen percent. So this is going to impact some of the services that waste services provide, but it's still going to be kept at eight percent. This, uh, some of the uh, the haulers are not particularly happy with this. They would like a slightly different proposal, a slightly different change, a slower change in the regional waste fee and a higher change in the mixed waste dumping fee. That's probably not going to happen this year, but it will be looked at next year. It's important to remember that Metro's portion of the charges that your, your residents pay is about ten percent of, about ten percent of what the residents pay. A lot, the biggest charge is for the actual haul. It's not for the regional waste fee and so forth. So that's likely, and the council hasn't voted yet, is probably going to be kept at about an eight percent raise with some raises in all the other fees to match a cost of service. The overall cost of service has gone up quite a bit, about fifteen percent. That's an, that's an important thing to note. Um, we also have the innovation, the INI Grants Innovation, where we try and fund regional communities or regional groups that are trying to reduce waste. Uh, there's some of them that have special provisions for plastics. A couple and I, we haven't, the decisions haven't been made as to which grants to go, but some of them will have, want to use robotics to sort plastics so we can have a better sort separation of plastics. There's a bunch of different things. Some are more composting, some are uh better, better um use for uh wood waste or for old furniture and things like that. So there's a bunch of things, but we had like fourteen million dollars and we had sixty-three proposals or something like that. And we're whittling it down. We've got it down to about fifteen now. More requests than we have money for. Um, I covered the job things. Of course, we're trying to work with the state to work on the the lands issue and making the big issue, as you know, is making industrial lands ready for developments so that we have people. So that we, so when companies are looking for it, they're looking for a workforce. We have a great workforce. We have good education. We have a lot of knowledgeable citizens. But looking for the lands and they want to see that they can hire, they can get people who will have housing. But working on the housing is a big deal. That's one of the big deals. And then, of course, you know all about SB four. Doesn't affect Twalson probably, but it affects some of the areas. It could affect Wilsonville. It could affect um Hills, Hillsborough with some of the lands. We have the authority to bring lands into the urban growth boundary on the governor's authority. We don't know where that's going to go. There were some incentives paid for it's for the tech, for the microtech industry, particularly because of the CHIPS Act. So there's a potential for billions of dollars of investment. The state has put up some money to show good faith so that we have money to encourage people, encourage companies to come here and continue our silicon for, our silicon forest. Um, let's see, where are we? Two hundred forty planning grants. All right. Staffs in conversations to allow some of the smaller cities to actually use some of these planning grants, which are now available for application, to use these grants to support staff. This has previously not been true. It's a, it's a difficulty with larger cities. While it's a middle-sized city, I don't know where that's going to go, but some smaller cities particularly just don't have the staff to to do the planning. Um, that's uh, that's one thing. The regional refresh, I I mentioned that already. Small community building grants, that's something that's available. Small grants that are available through the departments up to usually twenty-five hundred dollars to support community service, community special community events that somebody wants. Maybe it's a, uh, maybe it's the crawfish festival, maybe it's a, you know, whatever the festival wants, if they need it for publicity and so forth. Those are applied through the different departments, whether it's Parks and Nature or WPS or what, or whatever. Uh, let's see. I think that covers it. Parks and Nature, the deadline is May second for applying for the Parks and Nature Grants. Must admit, I, I, you'd have to inform me what grants you've actually asked for with Park and Nature. Um, we're very happy to provide you with money for the purchase of the property that's more or less across from Plumbet Gardens, which is that Passall Canyon Park, which now has to be developed, but it's a great idea. And I'm very happy that it's in my neighborhood. So that's another thing. Finally, other issues. Uh, let's see. We don't have a slide for that, do we? Oh, regional discussions, transportation. Well, I don't want to get into the transportation too much. As you know, there is a, there is a move afoot in the legislature to get ODOT to postpone its tolling options for two years. That's a very recent thing and we don't know exactly how that's going to work out. As you all know, that uh not many people are very happy in this district. And I was all the way from here, all the way over to the other side in Clackens County. Very few people are happy with ODOT's tolling proposal. Um, so uh, we'll see where this goes, but it has to be sort of a legislative fix at this point. Otherwise, it's going to be, it's going to go to the ballot measure and we, we don't know where that's going to go. I've, I read the E I did a lot of review on it and let's just say that it didn't address all the concerns that all the cities and people had. It was somewhat short. We're in the process of updating the U G B. Projections due by twenty twenty-four. Metro has a pretty good history of projecting the population. There's obviously glitches. We had pandemic glitches, and now we've had a little bit of a decrease in population in some areas, so there's gonna be some changes in that, but we have to adjust. And then we have to balance that against the land availability. As you know, some things have changed in land availability. Builders are developing at a higher density than they used to be, so there's more density is going into the land, and plus we have some legislation, two thousand and one, which allows or encourages city to build more duplexes, triplexes, quadruplexes on existing lots and so forth, and we don't know exactly how much impact that's gonna have. But overall, it does decrease. It does decrease the pressure on adding land outside of the current U G B or urban reserves. So I think that that's just a sort of a heads up. The regional transportation plan is being revised. It has to be revised by twenty twenty-four. That was done in two thousand and eighteen. I think it's gonna need a lot of work, particularly when it comes to transit and providing transit, all the areas that are developing, particularly in the periphery. And so I think that's a big challenge. You probably have as many ideas on that as I do. The Mobility Pricing Plan, which rolled into the tolling plan, one of the problems with ODOT's tolling grant, it didn't really fully recognize the goals of the Mobility Pricing Plan. Didn't really, and it's sort of coming out before the Mobility Pricing Plan plan, so there's issues there as well. And then finally, the Southwest Corridor. We're getting, Metro is gonna spend or get up to a thirty million dollars to at least update the studies so that they, the Southwest Corridor Plan can still be ready for federal funding and moving that forward. So it's still a priority. It's not gonna get off the drawing boards. It was a tier-one priority that's still there, significantly affect Tualatin, provide Tualatin with access to the metropolitan transit system. So that's still there, but it's not doing anything amazingly right now. It just has to be updated from the time when it actually was first evaluated. So that. Let's see, I think that pretty much covers it. Anything else? A lot of stuff going on right, and I sort of glossed over it a little bit.
Oh, well, I'm gonna stick the stuff close to here, I guess. So on the King City, that Fisher Road that's going through, does that, I saw a plan a couple of years ago, is that the road that runs right along the Twolton River? We were just talking about being worried about, you know, runoff into our river, and we're downstream.
No, it doesn't run right along.
Okay.
It runs from Roy Rogers Road, and then it sort of angles. And it's a major intersection right now. Fisher Road is a major intersection. So it's a way-to-way. It's about a half a mile.
Okay.
There are some concerns regarding its impact on some nature reserves and things in that area, but King City is having a planning commission, or I should say a city council consideration of the planning recommendation next week.
Okay, and then I was interested. We just sent off a letter from our city on the environmental assessment on the I two oh five tolling, and I'm wondering if Metro sent in any kind of letters and the gist of what it said.
Metro Council President and Counselor Lewis sent in the letter of response. We did not ask a group. Our staff sent in a technical response. I committed, I sent a lot of eight pages, in fact, technical comments. And they used some of them. To be very honest, I'm not entirely in concurrence with the letter that the counselor and Metro Council President sent, but we did not, as a group, every counselor is entitled to send in their own letters and their own comments.
Okay, and then the last thing I just wanna, you've brought up transit and transit options out here, and anything you could do to advocate for transit out here, we'd appreciate.
Time.
I'm sure you do.
I'd like to see more transit here, and that's one of the things that I think the two oh five study really, it mentions the word transit, but it doesn't really say how they're gonna use transit to solve any of the congestion problem. You, as a council, passed the letter on, and you know that very as well as I do. Other questions? Councilbrooks?
I, my question has to do with regional planning. This is something that I talk about in different places, but I don't think I've talked about with you. And when I hear two neighborhoods with three thousand homes, and I understand the need for housing, but decoupled from transportation planning, robust transportation planning, I feel like it's another place where we get stuck a lot of times, and I'm just curious as a body with Metro, are there ways of looking at those strategies? You know, I'm somebody that came from Detroit, so there's no planning for growth without planning for roads there. So and transportation, and it wasn't always cars. So I'm just curious about that thought process.
Thank you. Great question, and one that I know King City, as well as Sherwood, as well as Tualatin. We're still in the first phases of the R T P update, and they're quite aware that dealing, doing something with transportation along this west side corridor is something they need to do. Far as I can tell, so far, the county is doing it in sort of a somewhat a piecemeal fashion, because there isn't a comprehensive, was not addressed at the transportation meeting in the two thousand and eighteen transportation plan. Now we essentially, we're gonna have so. It is an issue that needs to be resolved. And I, all I can say is it's a little premature to say exactly what's gonna, what is gonna be proposed in the R T P at this point in time. It's something that I'm aware of, and it's something that most of the cities are aware of.
I'm just gonna reiterate to you, I would just like to advocate in our, in your meetings and your council, and with who you talk to and your representatives, and I try to say to every representative that I talk to, this decoupling of housing planning with transportation planning is, you know, we see the constituents very up close, and what people want is livability. And doing that type of disjointed planning, in my mind, really decreases that sense of livability. We want people to not be in accidents and to not have road rage incidents and to not spend half their day sitting in traffic, sucking fumes, or whatever they're doing. So I just, you know, I just think it's a big conversation, not just for our city or for Metro, but for the whole state and how we think about things. So I really appreciate your research and your knowledge about it, and just want to encourage you to continue how we can think about this in a better way.
I agree with you. It's a significant issue, and somewhat farne, and we haven't always done it correctly.
I would think that adding five thousand homes and not doing anything on ninety-nine W is a big problem.
I recognize.
Right, and then.
Yeah, tolling, yeah.
Other questions?
Sorry, we're preaching to the choir.
I just got two questions, real quick ones. So on the metro planning grants, I heard they were delayed when those opened in May. When is the official opening date for planning grants? Because I heard it, President Peters, last I heard was May.
Yeah, so May is when we and as soon as it becomes available.
So I'd be kind of intrigued about, the council was saying to help out with our planning staff, if part of them, it could be helped augment contractors, something to help our planning staff in completing a grant or getting a grant application in, that'd be great. Number two, on the U G B, I forgot to mention this before, but it triggered in my mind when you mentioned it, Counselor, that there was a discussion at the Washington County Corning Committee that there's empty land that's been brought into the U G B that's still sitting vacant. You know, it's allocated in the U G B, it's been sitting there, and the assumption of the last U G B process was that it would be built upon within five years. And it has their spots throughout the metro region. It's been ten years that the land is sitting vacant. All comes down to infrastructure. The cities don't have the ability to provide services in that area. That's what I think I'm gonna commend you, Metro, on, is on this new working plan for the U G B, they're gonna anticipate that. Not that they can hand out dollars to us to provide services, but they've now come to understand that just because it's brought into the U G B, you know, cities don't have the dollars and capacity to provide services to these areas. And it's a shame that there's a whole chunk of the land just sitting there, because the city that it would be part of just can't do it, doesn't have the staff. So I greatly appreciate that in this next go-round, that this can be brought into the discussion. It's okay, we do put in the U G B, what's the methodology? How can we make sure a city can develop it? Because the goal is to have it built out in five to ten years, and it's not happening.
I appreciate that comment. One of the things that we've seen is over the past twenty years or so, we've had projections of this is the kind of how that it could be built, because the lands are available, but there was not enough focus on land readiness. And so the housing actually being developed is much less than what it is, but it's a problem that cities have, because cities developed a bit of land, and it takes a while to get money, pay for the resources, the infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera. So they don't have the money to willy-nilly just allocate another billion dollars. And I wish we had the money to do it, but we don't have the money to allocate it to. So getting readiness, some of the big open lands that were put into the U G B are all in Clackins County, but neither Happy Valley and Breton are both very busy doing their own development and taking care of the services they need to provide. So they don't have the ability to start developing those areas, so they don't have any services. Cities here have a better record, on the west side, have a better record of providing those services. There's Wiltonville, Tualatin, Kingston, King City, Tigerd or Beaverton, and Hillsborough. Everybody seems to have a little better handle on getting the money and developing the land and making it ready for development. So that's why there's a lot going.
Appreciate you both coming out tonight and spending a few hours with us.
Appreciate it. Always informative, and it's always a pleasure.
We try to keep it that way.
Thanks very much. And I actually thank Eduardo for putting in the slides to keep up with my speaking.
Alright, so speaking of development, our next item is part of our council education series, Planning Three Oh One. Welcome, Steve. You're solving the whole U G B problem?
Yep, that's what I'm gonna do right now.
Just like that.
Generation of the council education series, first, Planning One Oh One, which was a historical visit through how and why we plan. Tonight's presentation is Planning Three Oh One. We're gonna focus in and do a deep dive into the comprehensive plan. So tonight's agenda, we're gonna go through just a couple of table-setting exercises with what is a comprehensive plan, a brief overview of a comprehensive planning process, it's the one. We'll look at how is a comprehensive plan function, kind of from a nuts and bolts perspective. And then we'll take a very exhaustive, but hopefully informative walk through to Walton's own comprehensive plan. And then we'll queue up for a future discussion, topics under the headings of Planning Three Oh One and Four Oh One. And so that'll be the development code, and then tying all of these pieces together and discussing how they work together. So starting out from the beginning, what is a comprehensive plan? They obviously have different actual content from city to city, county to county. They're common across the United States. Cities have them, cities have them, but they have some very common defining characteristics. They're used to guide the developments of a community. They generally cover the entire community, although there are sometimes sub-area comprehensive, geographic areas within a broader comprehensive plan. And generally, they have a long-term time horizon, roughly twenty years. Under the heading of what is a comprehensive plan, comprehensive plans commonly have a series of common goals, starting with health and public safety. This is our first tie-back to Planning One Oh One, where you see originally cities were granted the authority to do planning through what were called the quote-unquote peace towers. And so having justification for public benefit such as health and safety, or common justifications for cities to be able to plan, and so those are two of the main and foremost common goals in comprehensive planning. They also find circulation, public facilities, fiscal help, economic involvement is a big one, environmental protection, and equity. And I've put the most recent council waste map on the slide to the right, and you'll notice that those common goals very closely, almost perfectly resemble and align with your vision. That's interesting observation. The comprehensive planning process, just in a nutshell, to give kind of an overview of how a comprehensive plan is created. So it kind of starts out from existing conditions or research phase, so we're essentially starting at the top of the wheel, there are the existing conditions. It's difficult to go through a visioning process, and that leads into creation of goals and objectives. You see kind of in the center of the wheel, citizen involvement, and that council involvement is a constant throughout the process of developing a comprehensive plan. And then you have a period of plan implementation. And then typically, again, knowing that this is a cycle, you would have a period of review and revision. And so I think just a further note with a comprehensive plan, knowing that it's a twenty-year look ahead, you know, commonly, a best practice perhaps would be to update the plan every ten years or so at the midpoint of that cycle. Just quickly, and we're gonna get into this quite exhaustively when we walk through Walton's own comprehensive plan, how a comprehensive plan works. So kind of it's core, the goals, policies, and other pieces of the comprehensive plan are the council's interpretation of the public interest as it relates to land development. It establishes goals, which are broad statements, objectives, I guess you might call them. And then policies are a little bit more specific, that give teeth to how goals need to be accomplished. Our particular comprehensive plan, and it's fairly common in comprehensive plans, uses strategic actions or sometimes also objectives, which are not necessarily goals or policies, but they may be future policies that could be considered, or outcomes that are hoped to occur from implementation of the goals. And then lastly, maps, plans, and codes, like the development code and the municipal code, are used to carry out the goals, policies, and actions of the conference. Starting our deep dive into Walton's comprehensive plan, so as miracle from our last meeting, the Walton comprehensive plan was adopted in eighteen eighty-two and then acknowledged by the state in nineteen eighty-three. The development code was created and adopted around the same time. You'll see on the right-hand side of the slide, that is an aerial image of Walton from nineteen eighty, so roughly same timeframe as the adoption of that first comprehensive plan. You can't necessarily see a lot of detail, but I think you can see a lot of difference between what aerial Walton looked like today versus nineteen eighty. And so bear in mind that there are certainly parts of our comprehensive plan that back to that time, although, as you'll see, I think the majority of the plan has been updated at varying times, much of it fairly contemporarily. And that was done, I think, most recently, and most, no pun intended, comprehensively, with the twenty twenty plan refresh, where we updated the housing element, chapter three, based on the work of Walton in twenty forty. with the 2020 on plan refresh where we updated the housing element, chapter three, based on the work of Walton 2040. Um, and then updated the uh graphics of the comprehensive plan itself. And as I'll get into when we get to the economy chapter, we also have work from the Walton 2040 program that um will give the basis for a comprehensive plan update to the economy chapter. So just briefly here, this is the first five of 10 chapters and we're gonna go through each of these chapters one by ones. Read them all for you. See what the plan is made up of. And then this is the second five of 10 chapters. So starting out with chapter one, community involvement. The main takeaways from this slide is that uh chapter one is part of how the city originally demonstrated compliance with statewide planning. Goal number one, which is entitled citizen involvement. Under policy 1.11, um the Walton Manning Commission specifically serves as the city's advisory board. Uh, satisfies its obligations under goal one. And then on the right-hand side of the slide, you see an example of citizen participation in the planning process, which was taken during the Walton 2040 project. Chapter two, the next couple of slides will pertain to community design. Um, and so we have the goals and policies needed to accomplish the community design objectives for the community. A couple of things to call your attention to in this chapter, note that policy 2.1.2 includes encouragement of public engagement. And so this is one of the many examples that you'll find through the comprehensive plan. Um, that cross-reference and lends support to other chapters of the comprehensive plan. And so you'll see this idea of uh design standards kind of also reiterated in other chapters. Another important aspect of the new design chapter is preservation of trees. And so importantly, um, you see the establishment and specific call out to the city's street view programs, which is one of the main supports of the city being a tree seed USA, I know we're all proud of. And then it also calls attention to protection of trees in the development process as well. I guess I'll just go back and note that the nuts and bolts of these is we'll get into in our 301, our next presentation. We're actually carried out through the development. So these may look in general and you may be thinking to yourself, why is this so vague? Or why is this nonspecific? And part of the reason, and we'll talk about it kind of also as it all fits together, is that in some cases, providing a more general direction that gives sense of where the council wants to end up um can actually lead more flexibility in creating a specific program in the future. And so as things or contexts change, like the aerial photography and the level of development in Walton, the development code can be updated to meet those changing needs without necessarily having to reach back and go through a comprehensive planning process. Last slide on chapter two, community design, I would say is goals and policies related to signage. Um, you'll again note the reference to public health and safety as the basis for establishment of goals and policies regulating sign design. Um, so again, that goes back to that police powers that we talked about before. I think it's also worth noting that this chapter specifically calls out uh the rate of free speech, which is particularly implicated in the Oregon constitution. And then it also talks about balancing, which I think is a good metaphor for the entire comprehensive plan, but balancing the needs of business with the needs of community with needs of constitutionality. Moving on to housing, and so because this was the most recently and most comprehensive chapter, we're gonna spend a little bit more time in this chapter than some of the other chapters in the comprehensive plan. Um, so again, this chapter was updated substantially from what seemed to be at least mostly original to 1983. Um, based on, again, the 12 and 2040 project, which involved a great deal of public engagement and public involvement. And resulted in the adoption of our housing needs analysis in 2019 and the associated housing strategies. Um, so we see the promotion of zoning for multi-family. This policy that's identified in this chapter to help meet the housing goals that are found in that housing needs analysis. And then I think that, um, and you'll see again, some cross-references in other chapters, but it's important this actually follows up on our Metro Counselor's comments that there is an emphasis on having land in areas where urban services are planned. And in another cross-reference of policy, we'll look to chapter three. Justice Council Brooks's comments previously, looking to chapter three and those housing needs when making infrastructure plans. And so we are here striving to have that tie between an integrated land and transportation program. Um, and so this would also include updating future master plans such as the water master plan and the future transportation system plan update, which we'll hear a little bit more about later this evening. Having even deeper in the chapter three, um we again see the importance of aligning planning for housing with the availability of infrastructure. Um, acknowledging that developing housing in locations where existing infrastructure capacity is present is sufficient beneficial to the city's taxpayer. We also see the first mention of the strategic action, which I mentioned on one of the earlier slides, which encourages the city to evaluate opportunities to bring more dense uh multi-family land online and to reexamine availability of buildable lands in the future. Continuing on with our housing chapter, we see a goal of housing for all. That was something that we heard very clearly in the 12 and 2040 project. So we see that as a general goal with more specific policy. Um, that was implemented in part through the adoption of the missing middle housing types. I'm referring to policy 321, development of all housing types in residential zones. And so that's an example of where we had a goal, we had a policy, and then we actually had implementation of that through the development code contemporarily, pretty recently. And then the remaining strategic actions and goals speak to increasing housing affordability under the basis uh for the work the city undertook to create its housing production strategy in 2021, as well as the basis for ongoing work to create an equitable housing strategic plan to help identify sources for further affordable housing. Wrapping up our housing chapter, um I wanted to call your attention here to identification of misuse commercial development, which we've heard repeatedly as a community and council goal. Um, and as a strategic action, I would add they're evaluating whether a design and planning framework for a neighborhood that includes a mixture of housing types, neighborhood uses and amenities is usable. And again, going back to this theme of flexibility, I would note that there's flexibility in how that action could be implemented. And so for example, it could be used to study taking an existing residential only neighborhood to include a greater mix of housing types and commercial uses. Or it can conversely be applied to take an existing area that's primarily commercial, um such as somewhere within or near downtown and adding the evaluation of additional residential types to that area. So again, that's where flexibility can be beneficial, not being overly adversarial. We also see consideration being given to evaluating a future policy that was specifically look at incentivizing or I guess prioritizing redevelopment to include housing that addresses deficiencies within the H and A. I thought that was notable. Moving on to chapter four, the economy. Um, so as I mentioned earlier during the 12 and 2040 project, the city completed an economic opportunities analysis and a corresponding economic strategies that serve as essentially a companion to the housing needs analysis, housing strategies. Unlike chapter three, however, chapter four is not yet updated to incorporate this work. Um, although I will say that I think the goals and policies are still pretty good as they exist and pretty in line with council priorities, but benefit from that updating. And so our goal is to try to do this as a companion project um with the completion of our busalp employment project. Given that there's a pretty significant synergy between updating an employment zone in the development code and then updating the employment chapter of the comprehensive plan. And I guess the last thing before we go to the next slide that I'll call your attention to is that, as we previously mentioned, we see ties to other chapters. With the call out for a need for design standards. Chapter two, and then the encouragement of mixed use development, which is also kind of chapter three of the housing. Continuing on with chapter four, the next goal and policy are more industrial oriented in nature than the foregoing side, which is focused more on partial employment uses. And so here we find the city's goal of growing um industrial development and its tax base, rare exceptions. And specifically to encourage fully developed and industrial areas. And again, we go back to this adequate utility the idea of having serviceable land. Having undeveloped land. And then the last uh piece of chapter four that I want to call your attention to, and it's a pretty um robust goal and has a number of policies supporting it. So I think it's important to call it out and call your attention to it, is the city's goal of managing industrial of course, given the city's abundance of industrial land, particularly in many cases in proximity to other uses, including residential uses. Should be no surprise that we find a large number of policies and then intended to address industrial impacts such as noise dust vibration. Um, again, here we see a cross-reference to design standards at policy 3.4.7. And then at policy 3.4.8, um this calls specifically for truck routes for industrial traffic. And so this is one of the first examples in our comprehensive plan of a policy that specifically has an additional map that's on the back of the comprehensive plan. That uh is used to further, I guess, illustrate or describe the force of that policy. So that's map eight eight six freight routes. And that also ties in transportation system plan as well. Chapter five governs other land uses, and so that's land uses that are not residential or employment uses, industrial. This primarily means institutional lands, either publicly owned or often religious facilities. As you can see on the right-hand side of the slide, our facility where we're holding this meeting is institutionally zoned. And so you see that we've located this facility in a location that minimizes negative impacts for our surrounding neighbors. And it's a location that readily served the public. And so it was appropriately zoned. Chapter six is our chapter on historic preservation. And so it's home to the goals and policies that guide our historic preservation program. Primary goal being conservation of historic resources. Primary way that this um chapter is carried out is through the identification and preservation of historic resources through chapter 68 of the development code. So again, it's an example where the uh general goal and policies of comprehensive plan are carried out, specific regulation in the development code. Um, I think it's also worth noting that this is um one of the first chapters that you see in the comprehensive plan that also has a purpose statement. And this is kind of a vestige of the original comprehensive. So not all chapters have them, but that's where it, where those originate from. And so on the right-hand side of the slide, you see the 12 and 20 historically designated properties in Walton. Um, it's also worth noting here that chapter six is um part of what the city uses to demonstrate its compliance with CLEA, meaning goal number five, which includes preservation of historic resources. Continuing on to chapter seven, parks and the environment. So policies that are related to parks on the first slide. Um, and it's condensed from the original version. It's much longer, but I just wanted to give you a ver for it. That you're all very aware of the great work that our Parks Department does and the great work that's contained in our master plan. So the chapter, in addition to having a purpose statement, one of the other things that it's kind of a first, I guess, from the chapters that we've seen so far this evening, is that it identifies an additional document external to the comprehensive plan, which is nonetheless a part of the part, part of the comprehensive, which is the Parks Master. And so that master plan, which is 141 pages um plus a myriad of other technical appendices, making making an even longer document. That document itself contains even more goals. So similar when you have a situation where there's a master plan that is part of the comprehensive. It's typical for the comprehensive plan to have a summary level goals and perhaps policies and then have more technical information or specific information to be carried out through that master. So the second half of chapter seven is the environmental piece. Um, and so we have goals and policies of this chapter, which are to identify and protect significant natural resources. But we also see that there is intent to balance conservation with development needs. Um, and both of these uh goals and balancing are carried out specifically through the development code, as well as the city's participation in the Walton Basin Plan, which is implemented by Clean Water Services, our partner, through its design and construction standards. And then collectively, this chapter and those regulations also are how the city demonstrates compliance, also a statewide planning goal, which in addition to preserving historic resources includes preservation of natural. Chapter eight, transportation. This is a big one. I condensed it down a bit. Just beat it to death because you're gonna have lots of opportunity to get your fingers into this one as we did with our transportation system plan. Um, but I did want to give you at least a taste of it. Um, and so again, we see that an outside, technically outside of the comprehensive plan document, the transportation system plan, which again is a lengthy technical and complex document is nonetheless part of the comprehensive plan. We also see a purpose statement similar to some of the previous chapters, as well as a background statement specifically. Goals of chapter eight include maintaining the transportation system, reduce travel times. We also see significant objectives around multimodal forms of transportation, a different of water vehicles. And so of course, in the next couple of years, when the transportation system plan is ultimately updated, um, what we will look at is both determining that the, that the transportation system plan implies with existing goals and policies. And then we'll also have an opportunity based on the findings specifically of that transportation system master plan um to update any existing goals or policies that might be out of date. There's a continued synergy between the two documents. Our second and last slide on transportation, and I put a lot of text on there mainly because I just wanted to again drive home that um I thought you all might be interested to see the connection between the comprehensive plan goals for transportation. Again, the priorities from the council division. That's great to see that they're in alignment and it's good to know that we're heading in the right direction with those two plans. And we'll look forward to doing more work together on this chapter. Turning to chapter nine, public facilities. Um, so uh public facilities, as shown on the image on the right-hand side of the slide, that's the quote unquote unseen infrastructure types that we all use and need. Again, you see a purpose statement, which is common to this part of the comprehensive plan. You'll also note that we have incorporation of the water master plan, sanitary sewer master plan and stormwater master plan. Again, um you'll see an updated water master plan coming to you for adoption in this year. So similar to my comments on the transportation. After a slide, um we'll update any goals and policies that need updating based on the findings of the updated master plan. And so if there are things perhaps that relate to resiliency that we might not have necessarily emphasized in the previous water master plan in 2013, we'll look at opportunities to add those to the comprehensive plan. And then otherwise, we'll examine our other goals and policies in this chapter and other chapters to confirm that the water master plan as opposed to still be part of your adoption is findings to that effect. Our final chapter, zoning designations. So this chapter is a little bit different than some of the other chapters and is again a vestige from the older comprehensive plan. And so I think there are a couple of important notes before I talk a little bit about that. It calls out the fact that Walton is a combined comprehensive and zoning map city, which is a quote unquote one map system. It also notes, which I thought was interesting and important, the rationale for this is that eliminates the need for two sets of map. It simplifies the understanding of what land uses may be used on an individual property. And again, as I mentioned, chapter does not have goals and policies that are implemented through the development code. The chapter is basically purpose statements for each of the zoning or conference districts. And so it's a little bit quirky in that in some cases, some of the zoning districts in the development could also have their own purpose statement, some of which aren't in total agreement together. And so as I mentioned, since this is a vestige of the older, probably original comprehensive plan, would probably benefit from an update or perhaps best practice would be to have the purpose even for the zones live in the zoning designation. Perhaps not have this job. But that's decision for the council to make in the future. With that said, I thought that I would still give you a flavor of what this chapter is like because it covers all of the zoning districts. And so this example is an example from a couple of the residential zoning districts. So you can see the contrast between low density residential and medium density residential. The latter of which you'll note was updated and the city updated its development code to include middle housing types. And so the image on the upper right or low density residential or representative low density residential is from Ox Hill subdivision. And then the image on the lower right representative medium low density residential is from the Walton Village condominium. And then our last example is a couple of commercial planning districts. And so the commercial office district is intended to be suitable for office uses. And it kind of, I think by omission implies that that's more or less what it's intended to be used for, whereas the general commercial district is intended to be suitable for a full range of commercial uses and not just offices. And it talks a little bit about some locational appropriateness within the text. And so the image on the top right is from the Mohawk Business Park, which is in the commercial office zoning district. And then the image on the bottom right is looking south towards the Shell Station and the Leezy Boy Furniture Store on Nyberg Road. More impactful commercial uses than nice office park. Getting closer into the presentation here. Thank you all for bearing with me. And so as I mentioned previously, the following, I guess I'll call them master plans. I don't know how the needs analysis is necessarily master. As it is a housing master plans. We'll run with that. But they're all part of the comprehensive plan. They're not necessarily exhaustively repeated or duplicated in the comprehensive plan. They have goals and policies that summarize them at a high level, but they're all applicable to development through the comprehensive plan as implemented by the development code. And so you have starting upper left clockwise, you have the housing needs analysis, the transportation system plan, which will be updated couple of years, water master plan, which will be updated this year, a stormwater master plan, which is hopefully due for an update soon, sewer master plan, which was updated just a couple of years ago, and the parks master plan, which was also as I mentioned, there are a number of maps that are within the comprehensive plan that basically supplement or additive to the goals and policies or the text of the comprehensive. And in this case, the map ten one, the comprehensive plan, that is supplemental or additive to chapter ten. And so although we have some good descriptions of the purposes of the zones, a map is obviously needed to show where zoning boundaries are and where they apply in the city. I think that of course, in being consistent with a comprehensive plan, this zoning map covers the entire city and the extent that there's vacant lands is intended to govern land development over the next twenty years. And then it's just worth mentioning that the comprehensive plan includes a variety of, I would call them almost miscellaneous, although they all serve very important roles, have very impacts. Maps and figures that are referenced in the various chapters of the comprehensive and are used to carry out the goals and policies of the comprehensive. And again, where greater specificity or visual representation is called for can't simply be achieved by text alone. And so clockwise from the upper right, we have the city's functional plan designations. That's whether roads are collector or arterial. We have very important, the city's bike and pedestrian routes. It shows us where when development happens, we need to build different bike and pedestrian facilities and where some of our gaps are that we can address through future grants, things like that. So a very important app to have. The freight route plan, which I mentioned before. You have a metro regional planning type boundaries, which is kind of a little bit of an arcane planning map that is important to demonstrate our compliance with metro functional plan. And then we have the water master plan map, very important and will be updated shortly here. And then the sewer master first is important in making sure that we have, again, adequate serviceable plan for development. So at our next educational session, we'll take a similarly deep dive into the development code. Final section, educational series, we'll connect the pieces, we'll take planning one on one, the history, how and why we plan, the planning two on, the extension of the comprehensive plan, and then the development code. And we'll put all those pieces together and see how they work in unison. That concludes my presentation. I would just like to thank you for allowing me to share some of the work that I do with you and thanks for your patience. Listening to all of it and happy to answer any questions that you might have. Questions received. Councilor Brooks, the council president, Brad.
Surprise, surprise. Thank you very much. It's been comprehensive. I had a couple of things that, just going through all these types, kind of bubbled up for me. One was when I was at the, the conference in DC. There was a conversation, I forget the author's name, but about commercial uses that have front area retail and back area. I don't want to say maker space. That kind of maker space. And talking about, it was interesting to me because of the conversation we had around the Basalt Creek development area. So there was a lot of conversation about how to add that particular kind of zoning into commercial. And I was just curious if we had had any of those conversations or.
Yes, I know the book you're talking about, actually. Projects. It was an interesting, I think it's the book you're thinking of where it basically, it's like, kind of like a craft industrial development. I think that the takeaway from that emphasis of the book you released was that, that it was, and I think actually what we kind of came away with was the idea that actually like seemed like for our downtime. It was more suitable for like existing storefronts and honestly, I think the type of activity that would support like erecting a new building.
Yeah.
But you know, that these are just generic ideas of like, you know, if the city ever wanted to give you a space, that would be the exact business.
Yeah. Yes. And so the, and, and the reason why I thought about this, it's just because we had talked about more flexibility, but it wasn't that it was to be located anywhere. It was an interesting conversation and she had a lot of belief that there's a lot of future in this kind of work. And then my other question was when you were talking about the basin for the Twelton River Basin. There's also now that we have the Basalt Creek coming in, that's a different river basin.
Yeah, so the Walton Basin, so is a different river. Basin plan, that's the primary dream is based in the water services. It, the plan applies in other jurisdictions outside of that, like it applies much of it in the Walton River Basin. Yeah, it's worth noting that it does apply outside of the Act of the River Basin. So unlike is one of our primary forms of environmental protection, that only applies within the Walton River. That basin plan and basically environmental protection. It'll refer to the metro code. Applies across the city.
That, it was interesting to me because I remember when I first came on council and I was trying to figure out who covers that area with one of the rivers oversight services. It was really hard to find the person because it was like on this cross connection. So it was a different district and the water flow is a different direction. And I think that I think that you guys understand that. But I think when we're talking about comprehensive plans that are, that are readable, understanding these the natural resources and then coming from to understanding real estate where it's even, even just how we term land as viable or not viable. So some of the questions I had around the maps were just what natural resources we have, because I know that there was a lot of mindfulness around planning, around the wetlands. And then there's this bigger conversation, especially as we're developing around and with the greenhouse gas effect with tree canopies versus just, I don't know if street trees can really do that. And and then in general, building codes. And I will say, just because I've been having the conversation and people have been so concerned about trees after all this stuff with the trees. Which is a concern of mine as well. Talking there with our representative Walter, she said there's, she wasn't a big fan of Westland's tree ordinance, but really said to look at Milwaukee's and thought that they had a really, really good tree ordinance that was really, really well thought out. So those are things I'm thinking about. I know it's a really big smattering. But all of this helps me think about it. And so I really appreciate the all the work. And then I do want to also say, especially because of all the stuff that I've been seeing about transportation and how do we link it in a way that's actually viable and functional. I know that this is a bigger, these are bigger issues than our planning department. I know our community development department does a lot of work for our city and I really appreciate all the work that you do. And we have a little complicated area. And then finally, I kind of think about sometimes why areas are not developed. And part of the reason is because of landscape features and things like that that make it difficult to develop. So when I look at everything, the goal is for everything to be developable. I don't necessarily see that always as effective or as increasing beauty or as increasing livability. So, yeah.
Um, I guess I'm going to try to stick to the strategic actions and some of the, I'm just basing this on master plans I've seen. And it just seems like to me that some of these strategies are just, they need to be fleshed out a little more. And you can tell me if they belong there, but I, I pulled out a couple. I'm just giving you a couple of examples. Like it said, provide track routes for industrial traffic. Well, would, would adding that minimizes effect on residences and natural resources be part of that strategy, something that could be added to that action? And another one was like on the commercial development, it said functional and attractive. Well, like couldn't it, couldn't there be wordage about maybe about minimizing environmental impacts and maybe promoting, I, I don't know how to term this, but like promoting active activities, like, you know, we want pathways by those. So I'm not quite sure in the wording, but couldn't that be part of that statement? A little more detailed and updated to concerns and needs of now as opposed to whenever those were put in place.
This, I mean, I think the short answer to your question, yes, I think that you kind of go back to that cycle of the comprehensive ask yourself, but like you kind of, I mean, to some degree to like add new things you need to, you need to, like, especially if you're going to add things to a chapter that aren't necessarily related to the underlying chapter, then.
Like, I guess, like, so I'm going to give you an example, say on on both commercial development and residential, say, bottom line, we want in our development code, things like requiring EV, solar landscaping, maybe more green space. So that's in the development code, but don't we have to have in the strategic, in the comprehensive plan of statement that supports that?
Yeah.
Which we don't have.
You're obviously convinced.
Right, I understand that, but.
Also, I mean, it's possible that we might use existing policies to accomplish that, or we might add policies where appropriate. And I think the, the issue is, is that where you add things like, there's already an environmental code that applies.
Right.
What problem is it that you're trying to solve by adding?
Yeah. Well, I guess it's to me, we want to make like the future growth, these things incorporated into the future growth of our community. So I guess that's for next time, but that's the ultimate goal to me. Okay.
I mean, again, if the goal is to update the comprehensive plans, especially in certain ways, I think that the question is, is that, you know, is the end result to update the development code? The end result is update development, could it be done under the existing framework is considerable updates to the development could have been done under the existing. And then I think the other question is that if the development, if the comprehensive plan is going to be updated, you know, set, especially if you're not necessarily, like the focus on the economy and housing was easy to do because of the fact that they were standalone chapters and like normally have their own kind of standalone element. But if you're going to like, at what level do you start going back to the process of like doing a code audit, community visioning?
Yeah, I get it's, it's involved process.
So that, I mean, there's some tipping point to the, like, depending on what the, what the final outcome is desired is, that would kind of dictate where whether or not you actually want to enter back into that process or whether or not you want to work around.
And then if, if say we were to do it, like, I guess we have the housing needs analysis. We've got the parks master plan. We're going to do a TSP. So could you do it in a way that it would incorporate those because they're fairly recent, but we have other areas that are pretty outdated.
Sure, you could. And I think the real question of all processes that at some point totally makes sense to have a conversation about doing a community visioning process. Doing like a comprehensive audit in essentially an existing audit of the comprehensive plan and or from beginning and kind of looking through what are the, I guess I would, you know, do a slot analysis, strength week.
Okay, yeah.
I would point out things like you, that was a really good insight.
Um, yeah, we just need more staff, right? Get one of those friends.
Other question.
Other question. Or them out. So I just got a couple, Steve. So the this one, uh, council person practiced that. So our transportation chapter might be informed and updated with the upcoming TSP, correct? And then, uh, on chapter four, the economy, commercial, industrial, you're saying that the Salt Creek Urban Rainfall Zone, uh, was the update for that? Did I get this? Did I hear this wrong?
Let me, let me just step up on that one. So when we did the housing needs analysis, we did a economic analysis. The result is this set of strategies in both housing and then the economy. And so the housing strategies are what fed into the update to chapter three.
Right.
And although the strategies for economy are shorter and not necessarily as robust as housing and our act share, chapter four has a lot of similar ones already. Essentially the goal would be, and we have a draft of it, to basically work in the updated economic strategies into the, in the chapter four, so that we would have basically a similarly updated comprehensive based on the work before, right?
So by my notes, the chapters that are more urgent, if you will, for relook are eight, four and 10. And 10 being the, the monster one, the land use designation.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I would also probably add two. I mean, I think that two doesn't, two is maybe a little bit too general and you don't really have any corresponding figures in. So at some point, because you don't have any, there probably ought to be more direction on what does creation of more of us design standards look like? Right at a higher level. Um, but I would add to this, but I
For those who haven't read the document, I'd ask you to do it. It's not that long. One benefit of this, this comprehensive plan versus other cities, it's less than 50 pages. It's not that hard of a read. Uh, so before we get to the 301 class, would ask that you read through it. It, it's good to know and with, uh, once you read this, some stuff that you can see is definitely updated. You can see the stuff that's newer. Uh, but I think it's timely considering, uh, the hearings we have coming in the future. You want to make sure you understand our content. What's in it? They still won't be here in a few weeks.
And we can send you the link.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a nice PDF and the graphics are great. The picture is nice. Yep.
Yeah.
Makes it a little easier to read. Hey, I was for Steve. Thank you for doing this, Stephen.
Yeah.
Pretty good. Enjoyed it. Not to say about comprehensive plan, but it's important. All right. All right, that brings us to general business. Item number one, consideration of resolution number 5686, 80, 5686 dash 23 awarding the contract for consulting on the transportation, transportation system plan update or TSP. Oh, he's back.
Try to get through the subset as possible. So, uh, we're here to provide you with a brief overview of resolution 5685 dash free awarding a contract holding on transportation system plan and that for your approval of this resolution would allow us to process. Quick overview of our presentation. I'll do a recap of the RFP process. Mike can quickly walk through the, um, TSP phases is outlined in the scope of work divided by the consultant. I'll go through some next steps. We'll make sure to add a little bit of time at the end for questions or concerns, and then we'll request that you adopt the resolution. Uh, so Mike and I were before you back in early October to ask for a thumbs up approval to, uh, move forward with the RFP process. We also talked a little bit about why we need to be updated in the first place. Uh, we immediately went to work on that. Our contracted procurement analyst, Richard, he was very helpful. The RFP was published in the Daily Journal of Commerce on October 24th and the business June on October 25th. We received three consultant proposals before the submission deadline, back in December of last year. Our review team started a technical review of the proposals, after which each member scored the proposal based on how well we felt the firms responded to the criteria we established in the RFP. We published those scores and requested pricing proposals for each of the three firms after release of the initial scoring. One of the firms went through their proposal. Uh, the review team then reviewed the score, review and scored the pricing proposals submitted by the remaining firms. Those scores were at previous point totals and published. And at that point, we felt it was close enough that we invited both firms to interview in person. However, after a review of the second round of scoring, the second ranked firm also, uh, went through their RFP proposal. So at this point, we are happy to announce that Fair and Peers is the candidate that we selected from the process. Their proposal was the highest scoring proposal throughout the entire process and, uh, from our conversations and and discussions with representatives from that firm, we're confident that they can deliver a, uh, high quality TSP update. We used the time we had set aside to interview that firm to talk with them and further discuss the vision and TSP, vision for the TSP and solidify the scope of work and and they, they revised that scope of work with a few specific phases, a listening phase, analysis phase, and plan writing phase, basically. And I'll let Mike talk through those.
Then, uh, Fair and Peers team also includes Alta planning. Three main phases that are in the scope of the transportation. Somewhat in order, but kind of all worked together. Uh, first is the listening phase where you really want to just hear from the people. All the people, you know, what are your needs? What kind of situations are you in? How, what do you really care about? What do you want? And kind of, you know, including the people that we normally hear from and also reaching out to people that are too busy working three or four jobs and taking care of three kids and ready to sit down on the table and load that bag. Uh, so Alta is going to be very heavily involved. Reaching out through whatever means we can think of. Uh, in person, online, everything else to really get what the people want. Uh, the second phase is only the analysis phase. That'll be some of its number crunching, graphic volumes, capacity calculations, vehicle speed measurements, uh, things like that. Some of it's also kind of the state, regional, legal context. What rules we have to follow. Cities around us, counties, regions, they, how we all work together well. Uh, and then we get into the plan writing phase, which looks at, you know, the different modes of writing up. We want to see how does land use fit into this? I had a really earlier discussion. Metro before that. And then transit, walking, biking. What can we do with the transportation system to balance? How do we work it all together? We figure about a year for of these, the initial plan development work. And then we'll be looking into adoption. Be involved all the way through. And looking towards a strat plan.
So, uh, if you look to approve the resolution before you this evening, we will move to final contract negotiation with Fair and Peers. That contract, and once the contract is in place, we'll take it all apart. Pick up and begin working on goals, objectives, setting up that public engagement process. Questions? I just wanted to read through the staff recommendation. Staff recommends the council approve the resolution awarding and allowing sure direct to deal contract with Fair and Peers for consulting on system plan update and the amount of $427,577. But note on that amount, we had initially planned for a not too big amount of around $400,000, but after further discussion with, uh, the firm regarding what we're looking to accomplish with the TSP update, cost increased just a bit based on a couple of reasons. Uh, the engagement activities and the materials and graphics that we had emphasized in the RFP and in our follow-up conversations would bump the cost up just a bit. We really want to focus on reaching those harder reach groups in order to reflect the city's desires. And then responding to the climate friendly and equitable communities requirements, uh, specifically to address the need for entitled sidewalk and bike lane and pedestrians. And some of the other issues that we need to address to make sure that we're aligned with, uh, those rules, assuming they stay in place. We feel that those are important enough topics to justify the slight increase. And we do have the budgeted in the road out there. Problem with that, I mean, to answer some questions.
Questions?
Just the odd amount, like, why isn't it 430? Yeah, I guess.
Person is that number of hours?
Right, the rate.
I want to reiterate. This really is. All three of them came in and met with us. After the first round of scoring, third place team dropped out, I think. And then after that, the second team dropped out. Questions?
I got a question, having lived through last TSP. Council, so on the listing phase, what I thought, and I get, I'm not going to get into the weeds here because we haven't gotten this far yet. But what I saw valuable in the last TSP was that we had a core, basically an advisory committee informal advisory committee of residents who knew, loved, read transportation. And they were a core committee. And then we had subcommittees. And the group got sometimes very large. So I'm wondering if that's going to be part of the in-person hybrid workshops. Uh, because we do have a lot of folks in, in Twelton that know this stuff very, very well. I hate to miss them. Or they feel not included. Or, you know, ideally, we have something where we have reoccurring meetings, which, you know, everyone loves. Uh, but a lot of things were hashed up and hashed out in the last TSB that way. You know, the green and red, you know, dot exercises. Uh, we've made significant progress that way. We got consensus on the project where we really got down to the TSB project list. That was phenomenal versus having a pop-up event for somebody who's barely interested. You know, you know, giving their opinions. So just keep in the back of your head. You know, I don't think either we were here back then, dust that off a little bit to see how the public engagement went. Because back then everybody was, um, super happy how, uh, the community was engaged in the TSP and they were on board with it.
Oh, I don't know about super happy, but.
I wasn't substitute on that big group.
Yep.
Everybody in, I was kind of a mess sometimes.
It was a good mess.
Well, except when people like that lady from ODOT had to tell her personal stories and nobody stopped her.
But what I was what I was going to add was that I think you did talk about that in the advance about having, um, a transportation committee and we had talked about it, um, starting that with, um, the TSP update.
Yeah, we, we definitely have people that
Yeah.
will know what you're talking about more than we do.
Other questions?
I'll make a motion.
All right, so what were you waiting for?
To disapprove resolution number five six eight six dash 23, awarding the contract for consulting on the transportation system plan update. Second.
I have a motion, a second to, uh, approve resolution number five six eight six dash 23, awarding the contract consulting on the transportation system plan update. This is not an ordinance. This is just a voice vote, correct?
Correct.
Bust that off. Any questions? Are any discussions on the motion? Hold the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same? unanimous? Much? Thank you.
Amazing job. Get to work.
That brings us to item removed for consent. We did have one item moved earlier tonight. That was item number three. Uh, consideration of resolution number five six eight eight dash 23.
We're prepared to make a little present, a little presentation if you.
That would be great, yeah.
Thank you for the heads up that allowed us to.
Few hours, yeah.
So this is regarding an easement. Access easement here to the water. So just for orientation, this is the Autumn Sunrise subdivision. And Norwood Road. High five. And the tanks were, they were built about 50 years ago or so. We secured an easement to get to and from them because this is the highest point on the property. That's where we wanted to put the water tanks. So we had to establish an easement in 1971 for this access road. And this is also the alignment of the soon to be old pipelines connecting reservoirs to the rest of the city. So this is the Autumn Sunrise subdivision plans overlaid on the aerial photo. And as part of their development, as part of the water master plan, uh, they built a new 18-inch water line along this street across here and then into the reservoir this way. And then this blue area is the same route that crews can take using existing road. To this track here. Set aside for our use for accessing for the pipes. And then the red is the old easement that's no longer. So the resolution before you is to terminate the easement here across these portions of the property, basically because we no longer need it.
Go ahead.
So, so if I'm understanding correctly, like, um, were they required to put this new line in for this development?
They were required to because it's in the water master plan.
Okay.
For some reimbursement costs. The alignment had some flexibility to it. You know, they could have built the alignment straight down here. Better for them.
But that probably makes the value of those properties a little less if you have an easement across of your back. Yeah, okay. Um, I just wanted to make sure, I guess my concern was, um, like, like they, they put in these new pipes, but that there's no, um, disadvantage to the city by having this new easement.
Don't see a disadvantage.
Okay. Okay.
And just to be clear, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not a new easement. The water line is in the right of way now. So, um,
it's better than an easement. Right. That, that makes sense. Okay, I'm fine with it. I just like kind of wanted a little more clarification on this. So that was a I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number five six eight eight dash 23. Second.
Question, a second to adopt resolution number five six eight eight dash 23 in special. Hold them, favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Unanimous? All right, that brings us. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Brings us to council communications and, uh, council area. That has been enough.
I'd like to, uh, we repeat this from our.
I'd like to, uh, we repeat this from our Mecha president. His name is Jonathan, if you don't remember, if you remember him, he was here last council meeting and they were awarded a, uh, nice recognition for their work. Well, they're having their second, um, car meet event. Uh, some of you might. There it is. If you can get up there. If not, then our flyers here. Um, they are having their first, their second car meet at the Tuolton High School. They're inviting everyone to attend, attend April 28th between six and 8 p.m. Uh, they'll be selling food, showing cars, and they'll be raising money for the immigrant fund that they, the school has. Uh, this event is cash only, so. And that's, um, yeah, April 28th. So make sure you stop by, support this program on this event and, um, for our kids.
Other council communication. I'll let you.
Oh, okay. Just for, you do it last week. Yeah. Just want to remind everybody this Wednesday from six to eight, right here at the city service center will be our state of the city address and, uh, the mayor's come up with a kind of fun way of presenting it. So I hope people attend.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the many, many people who stopped by to, at the Tuolton Police Department between 10 and two for the prescription drug takeback day. Thank you to our officers always as how you handle things so professionally and friendly with our community. I want to say that in that appreciation of the community, that we usually, um, gather like, like two, maybe three big boxes. But this time we got five boxes and the impact that, uh, that has of, for the environment to safely dispose of, um, prescription drugs or any medication is huge, but it's also very important for people who, um, may be choosing to, um, go through medicine cabinets and find some pills or something that, that would not be prescribed to them. So I want to say thank you and also encourage, um, people that between Monday and Friday, between eight and five, there is a permanent disposal box in the police department entryway and to please use it year round.
I don't know. Wish you a journey.
Almost.
Good second would burn to me for this evening. All the favor say aye.
You two in the back behave.
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening. We'll see you all on Wednesday.